Good evening, 7 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Start out by seating our alternate, who is sitting in. I want to make sure, get your right, correct the...
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Let me introduce the people who are here on the board for us tonight. Andrew Badeau, Robert Lindire, Anne Crimmens, Suzanne Yuha, and our alternate. May I please have a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting on May 21st, 2024?
So may.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved. This is a public hearing by the Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Granby. Will the secretary please read the legal notice of the meeting?
Town of Granby memorandum. Zoning Board of Appeals, John Pegliero from Abby Kenyon. Appeal by Bare Feet Properties LLC seeking a lot and depth variance of zoning regulation section 5.1 to allow for a lot line revision of 254 Salmon Brook Street, file Z07-24-01. Appeal by Bare Feet Properties LLC seeking a lot depth and front yard variance on zoning regulation section 5.1 to allow for lot line revision and building addition, 256 Salmon Brook Street, file Z07-24-02. Bare Feet Properties LLC owns two properties in Granby Center, 254 Salmon Brook and 256 Salmon Brook Street. Property owners would like to shift the lot lines between the two properties in order to facilitate the commercial redevelopment of one of the properties. The lot line revision would result in non-conformities, therefore the variance application has been made to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Below is the information about two properties. An explanation of the specific request.
This is how we operate. We hear the appeals in the order of the legal notice. New as applicants will explain the application to the board and will introduce any exhibits you feel will help us to make a fair decision. Speakers can speak on behalf. Speakers can speak in opposition. The applicant can rebut any opposition. We, as board members, of course, will ask questions. Speakers, when you come up, please come up to the podium and state your name and address before you start speaking. After we reach a decision, you will be notified by certified mail, usually within 10 days. Granting a variance or appeal requires a yes vote of four members. If we grant your variance, be sure to report it with the town clerk within 90 days. So the first item is the appeal for a lot depth variance. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the application?
My name is John Pegliero, 19 Days Street South and West Granby, owner 254, 256 Salmon Brook Street, and I'm here tonight, as Bob reiterated, that I'm seeking an approval for a lot line revision, shifting the lot line between both parcels. 256 Salmon Brook currently is 1.4 acres. It's center edge zoned. It includes a single-family house in the garage in the rear. There's a three-car garage. 256 is the old print shop, which is commercial center zone. That lot is currently non-conforming, as it sits right now, in terms of setback, area depth, and other dimensional requirements, and we're trying to make it less non-conforming by increasing the size of the lot. I'm asking for the zone change, which is proposed in, I think, red in your package, if Abby printed out the color copy. Yep, that'd be the new lot line revision, including the print shop and the garage on one single parcel, which would allow me to fulfill the parking required for use of the coffee shop at the print shop. I'm working with two local Granby people who have plans to open a print shop, open a coffee shop there, and include both those buildings on one parcel. So I know there's three variances in total, which are summarized, I think, in the package as well. And then the adjustment would also allow me for expansion, which is not included today, meaning there's no plan to expand that building, but it would allow for expansion of the print shop building, and also, again, for the parking and for the redevelopment, preserving the historic nature of the buildings, encouraging the use within the town center, and improving the traffic flow to conform to public safety standards for the citizens of Granby to utilize this space.
Okay, so we're considering the first one, which is the lot depth variance for 254 Salmon Brook.
Yep, that is...
Any questions before we ask for comments?
Can I ask Abby a question? With the rear lot, is that whatever the definition of that line should be, does it have to be continuous all the way through the property? Or, because here it looks like you got part of the backyard is going to be close to what it's supposed to be, and then you're jutting in. So I was just curious on how that's...
Sure. So Abby Kenyon, Dr. Community Development, for the record. So you're asking about the detached garage and that configuration of the lot?
Yeah, like cutting that out.
Yep, so it is not, that would not be a rear lot. So the lot line between 256 and 254 would be revised?
I'm not calling it a rear lot. I was just talking about, so you know, you have the jog coming in like this?
Yep.
So is this considered the back line, or is this plus this considered the back line? So here's the red line. So this here, I understand, is the original backyard line?
Yep.
So by coming in this way, are you now adjusting the back line to partially here and partially here?
Yes, so this would be the backyard here.
Okay.
This would be for this property, I think it's shown on the plan, the side yard.
But this is also backyard of this, too, so is the full delineation of the backyard supposed to be in the, or is it, if it's partial, like just this part?
Yeah, so it's just this for the backyard. This is the front yard. The rest are side yards, per the definitions.
Okay, even this?
Even though, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to have clarified.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Yes?
This is ringing a bell with me that we've heard about this property before. Can you give us any history in the last year about what's happened with this property? Any decisions made on it?
I know it was up at the P&amp;Z not long ago.
Yeah, so I've been in here several times, trying to give a zone change on the parcel. I was granted a zone change for 256 Salmon Brook Street, where the print shop is, to get the commercial zoning there, and center edge so remains at 254 Salmon Brook Street.
I don't remember the details from the P&amp;Z meeting.
So details regarding what we were going to do with the structures. So at that time, we didn't have, well, we were just in conversations with the coffee shop people, so that would be a retail food and beverage service. My wife, who co-owns the property with me, she has a speech and language business, and we're looking to put her office in the garage with a loft apartment upstairs. And currently, there's really no tenanted plans for the home yet, except to improve it, and as I think about what I want to do there within the center edge zone.
Okay. Now, did P&amp;Z turn down a proposal, or?
They, well, they turned down committing the entire parcel to be commercial center zone.
Okay, so that's why you're looking for the division and attaching this property to the front property, which will then change it to commercial zone?
Allow me to lay out the parking for the retail shop, coffee shop as well.
So the potential exists for the coffee shop on Hartford Avenue and a second business upstairs in the garage, the existing garage?
Yes, yes.
And, sorry, I just want to clarify to make sure that the board has the full understanding. So when Planning and Zoning approved the zone change, they just approved it for the property where the print shop is?
Yes.
So even if the applicant receives approval tonight and can revise the lot line, where the detached garage is, that zone remains center edge. So the lot line doesn't follow the property?
Correct.
It would still remain what was formerly, if it's approved, 256 Salmon Brook Street. So whatever potential use in that detached garage would have to comply with the zoning regulations for either permitted or special permit uses in the center edge zone.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the business is that the speech business would be on the first floor, not the second.
Yeah, and then you'd have loft apartment upstairs.
Apartment on the second.
Correct. Just like the old tenant wanted all the time.
Yeah, so if I could, to the staff, Abby, I'm a little confused. So you said the red line for the former garage behind the house, that would not change to become commercial, but the building, proposed building addition on the old print shop would become commercial?
No. So let me show that the zone designation does not change. So what is currently shown as 256 Salmon Brook Street, that is, was approved by Planning and Zoning as the commercial center zone. If the lot line is approved and there's the building addition, that technically would be constructed in the center edge zone. There is a provision in the zoning regulations that allows the criteria of the less restrictive zone to be applied for a distance no more than 30 feet into the more restricted zone. So there is some ability to take the zoning regulations and apply them 30 feet into an adjacent lot, and that's to take into account properties that have split zones.
Another question.
I heard from, I think, our first selectmen that there was interest in looking at this entire street for a historical district, starting with 256 on down. Has any action been taken by the Town of Granby to look into, I know there's like a state process you have to go through to do that?
Yes, so that's a, it's a process that would start with the Board of Selectmen initiating a study committee to look at the potential historic district. That has not taken place. There were folks from the Historical Society who presented to the Granby Center Advisory Committee about the matter, and at that time, it was indicated that as part of the Granby Center study process, that might be looked at further. But in terms of it going to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen taking any further action, not at this time.
Okay.
And that issue did come up during the Planning and Zoning application as well, and the commission acknowledges that that committee work can take quite a bit of time, and in the meantime, there are property owners who are interested in future uses for their property, and so they should be able to apply the regulations that exist at this time.
And did you say from 256 down? From the house down?
256 is the print shop.
256 is the print shop.
Oh, right.
And just to clarify, I don't know what exactly the boundaries would be, because...
Okay, okay.
Because it has to be a vote, as I think I read in the Drummer or something, there has to be like a vote of all property owners to do this, once a committee is set up and it's studied and everything?
Yes, so if it were to get far enough along to vote to have this a historic district, then yes, there would have to be a vote by all property owners in the district.
Isn't a majority vote, or is it, has to be you?
I don't know. It's been a while since I looked at the statute.
I think it starts from the first house. No, but just for the record, I would be, we spoke about this, and I'm definitely in favor of it, and my intention is to keep that area, the house, the print shop, all the aesthetics the same, but just improved.
I just, one more question for the applicant. When you bought this property, it was a residential historic property. You paid a price for a residential historic property, and it seems over the last year you've tried to do everything to change that. Is that your...
No, I've tried to, I tried to do one thing, was to get a commercial zone change from center edge to commercial zone on the entire property.
Right, but that's not what you bought. You bought residential.
I did, I bought, I bought center edge.
So you have, right, so you have spent the entire year trying to get this turned into a commercial property, which have a lot more value to the property owner?
I guess, yeah, if you could, if you want to perceive it that way.
Well, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I mean, what I've tried to do is, my plan hasn't changed. I wanted to rent the print shop out as a retail service business and get it commercial zoned. I wanted to do a three-unit apartment building, three separate units in the house. That's why I was going for the commercial zone, which I can't do currently, right now. And I wanted to do the office and the loft apartment in the back. The plan hasn't changed over the year. It's just taken me a while to go through the process.
Thank you, Chair. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to take these one at a time, so you want to be up and down.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this first request? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this first request? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name is Martha Miller.
You can be louder.
Yeah.
My name is Martha Miller, and I live at 238 Salmon Brook Street, and I'm also the curator for the Salmon Brook Historical Society. I'm here for two reasons tonight. One is for our Historical Society being, John's property is the beginning of what we call our historical district. In our historical district, we have mostly families that maintain these wonderful historical homes. A lot of money is put into the homes to keep them up to par, which makes also our area look so beautiful when you're driving through Granby Center. It's very hard for me to believe that a land developer, contractor, home builder would not understand a zone, what zone his property is in, when you purchase a property, and Lou turn around and go for a commercial zone. Commercial zone means a lot more money if you do want to sell it, flip it, and then the next developer can come in and do whatever he wants. We have a very beautiful historical home on the site. This is the beginning of our road, and I think we need to preserve it, let our families in our neighborhood continue on as it did for many, many years, and to bring in a commercial zone. And I think, John, at the meeting, I was here in March, you mentioned you could get 33 parking spots in your area. I may be wrong, but usually when you purchase a home and you want a little coffee shop, you don't come up with 33 parking spots, you know, automatically. I know how many parking spots, and it just doesn't seem right to me. You know, and through our Historical Society, the main thing we want to do is preserve our homes, keep it a neighborhood feeling. And it seems like it's being chipped and chipped away, where, John, you keep returning here for more and more. And it's really a shame that, you know, it isn't understood on how important changing a zone to commercial could be for our town. It could just be the beginning of the downfall of this very beautiful residential road. And that's it, that's all I want to say.
Good question. What do you, where do you consider the historical part starting?
Right at, right at, right at 254.
But what about across the street? Do you also take it?
Well, you're right, there, you're right, there's apartments across the street. That's apartments across the street. I don't, I don't think it's a, it isn't like a commercial grocery store. People live there. To make 254 into apartments, I think is fine. You will have families living there. That's fine, and I think that's what it's owned for, that you can put families in 254. I do believe John could also put his wife in the garage, and I think on a variance, he could have a business for his wife there, too, of what I heard. And yeah, I mean, to bring more families in is great. For it to go commercial, it's not needed. It's not needed. It's the beginning of a lot of problems, and it might be the end of our neighborhood and our historical homes, as sometimes when businesses come in, it doesn't, they don't take care of it. Signs are put out front. It's very tacky looking for a historical district. As I said, we all spend a lot of money in maintaining these historical homes, and it gives Granby such a beautiful appeal to driving down the road, and we're such a happy neighborhood. We all know each other. We all know the histories of each other's homes, and we all take great pride in it. And the chipping away of going from one zone for, from somebody who realizes when they buy the house what the zoning is, to go so drastic into commercial and to keep coming back here and coming back here, eventually, it's going to eventually come back to the house.
Does anybody else on the board have another question?
And I'm not sure actually who it's to, but something, Martha, that you mentioned, isn't that what the Center Committee is studying, what should be part of this historic district? Because it was my understanding that they're looking at where it should, because again, when you have the vote, people in the proposed district, if I understand what I read right, people in the proposed district get to vote on what the district is.
Can you enlighten us, please?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I just want to...
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
So the Granby Center Study Committee, they really haven't discussed in-depth historic preservation in the area, right? There's a RFP that's currently out to hire a consultant. Who, once engaged, the committee will give them a scope of work and items to look at, one of which most likely will be historic preservation in the area. So I don't even want to, it hasn't even been discussed what the bounds of a historic area were or should be. Now, I do want to point out, in our zoning regulations, there is an historic overlay zone. It starts just north of the town green, so it has the law office, 8 East Granby Road, I think, 2 Park Place. It includes the town green. It extends down, includes 254 and 256 Salmon Brook Street, and then it pretty much makes its way south along Salmon Brook Street on both sides, just beyond Salmon Brook Park, I believe, somewhere in that area. So that is already the historic overlay zone in the zoning regulations. And when you look at the zoning regulations in the Granby Center zone, there are certain provisions that pertain specifically to properties in that zone. Now, that is not a local historic district designation, right? So it doesn't have necessarily the teeth that a local historic district would, but there are some additional considerations that would be given to properties within the existing historic overlay zone as it exists in the zoning regulations.
One more?
Yeah, just one last.
I wasn't calling you to one.
Thank you. So is it appropriate that if somebody comes forward like this applicant to ask for variance, that it could be premature to make a decision, even though the applicant wants to proceed, the community as a whole may say, hey, we're in this other process going on right now? Should we be making decisions that could affect the entire town?
So the role of the Zoning Board of Appeals is to look at the zoning regulations that are in effect currently and determine whether or not there's a hardship that justifies granting a variance. So I understand what you're saying, however, that's more of a Planning and Zoning Commission function when they wear their planning hat and, you know, what they're looking to do. But just, ZBA is very much regulations in effect and does, is what the applicant requesting, is there a hardship to justify granting that and varying the zoning regulations?
So if I understand correctly, if we accepted the modification to the line, the majority of that property that now would become part of 256 would still be center edge zone, it's not commercial. Unless you extend 30 feet in from that zone line.
Correct. So Planning and Zoning, they've already approved the zone change for 256 Salmon Brook Street. So that's the commercial, right? That is not going to change. So if the ZBA grants the variances to allow the lot line revision, that zone designation, where the center edge zone currently is on 254, including the detached garage, that stays the same, and the commercial center zone where 256 is, that stays the same. So you would effectively have a property that has, falls into two zones.
Right. It's like Shaw's Garage.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We may have you back. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against the proposal?
My name is Todd Bibber. I live at 102 Hungary Road. I, I'm trying, I am a board member at the Salmon Brook Historical Society. I'm not going to try to repeat the good points Martha made today. My question is, as I understand the house, the houses on that street can be used for offices. Why can't you have your wife's office be in the house and be that way and not use the garage? That's the thing. Second question I have is on the, if I'm, to say in the print shop where the new sandwich shop is to be expanded, if I, if I, you just worked on that, didn't you see that before you started working on the building, that you needed to expand the building? That's my question, that's all. But I just care is why that house can't be used to be office for his wife, to be quite simple. But, and Martha makes good points, I'm not going to repeat those. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this gentleman? Have a seat. Anyone else here to speak against? And now, sir, you had the opportunity to rebut the objections.
I'm John Pegliero, 19 Days Street South. Thank you. I sat with the Granby Historical Society for two hours, went over my plan exactly, laid everything out, shared all the documentation with them, including a parking layout, which we did, and I hired Brian Dino to lay out parking initially, just to deliver the concept of what we were trying to do. The 33 parking spots, I believe, came from a drawing submitted by one of the Historical Society members that overlaid 33 cars in between the house and the garage and the print shop, which was never the case. I've asked, I think, for less than half of that for the parking. I've asked, I think, for less than half of that for the parking. And parking would be submitted if in fact I was able to move forward with a special permit for the coffee shop. I would say regarding the historical homes all down the street, I'm 100% on board. I am a good neighbor as well. I take care of my properties in town. I own a three family across from Geisler's. I own the old Shaw's Garage, which is next door to Bob's house, which we improved the barn, the house and the garage itself. I would also say, within the current zone, which many of these homes fall within a center edge zone, you have many different uses, including Dr. Pendleton's house, which is a five unit apartment building. And further down the road, you have other uses as well. To answer the question about why my wife can't go in the house, she could. It's a big house, over 3,400 square feet. She's been operating above Granby Dental in a small office there. The garage is an expansion for her. She'll be able to get two offices there. So to put her in the entire house doesn't make sense financially, economically for us. And the second question was about the proposed expansion. So there, there is no plan to expand that building today. We wanted to show it because I'm working with the tenants who want to open a coffee shop and they said someday down the road, they want to expand that building if their business is successful in town. That's why it's on there now.
Okay. Let's address.
I have a question.
Oh, please.
It deals with parking. So for the proposed coffee shop that's in the footprint of the existing print shop, where are you going to park cars?
The, the parking would be between the house and the print shop in between that open space there.
Okay.
Yep. And, and for my wife's.
You're talking about 15 spots?
It's about 15 spots.
Using the access that's already there next to the house?
So potentially, the, the idea would be, we would lose the curb cut that goes directly into the print shop today. There's a little stub there.
On 189.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. Yes.
So the parking would be from Salmon Brook Street just prior to the lot?
Correct. Yeah. And then you would have egress from Hartford Avenue and on Salmon Brook Street. Yeah.
That's right, because they do have that access.
Correct.
Bank around there.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to stay there?
I will.
Are we done with the first request? Let's move on to number two. Asking for a lot depth variance for 256 Salmon Brook Street. Can you address that for us, please?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I could read number two, but essentially, yes, what, what we're asking for is a second variance, which is the lot depth variance for 256 Salmon Brook Street. The, under the current zoning regulation requires 150 feet front lot depth in the commercial edge zone, commercial center zone. And the proposed lot depth is 37.76 feet. And we're currently non-conforming, as I mentioned previously. And we're asking for a variance of 112.24 feet is, is needed.
So it's currently non-conforming and you wish to make it more non-conforming?
Less non-conforming, yes. It's non-conforming, now I want to make it less non-conforming.
But isn't Hartford Avenue also considered a front yard property because it's on the corner? So we run into this a lot, two front yard.
That corner is owned by DOT, right? I believe that, that, the corner there, yeah. So, but there is frontage on, yes.
On Hartford Avenue. So that, that also has to be considered a front yard zoning, if I'm correct. At least it used to be.
Yep.
Yeah. To be honest, it's a little confusing when it comes to the lot depth measurement. If you measure it from Salmon Brook Street, it currently is conforming because when you look at the run, it's more than 150 feet deep. But if you take your primary entrance on Hartford Avenue and you measure it, so you start measuring lot depth 50 feet back from the front property line and that lot is only, how deep is that now?
It's 0.7 of an acre.
Yeah. So you don't even have 50 feet to start the measurement from if you take it from Hartford Avenue. So because it was a little ambiguous and, and the applicant was coming before the ZBA anyway for these variances, I suggested that this be considered as well, just so there's no question as to whether or not it's acceptable.
Basically, he's looking for 150 foot variance from Hartford Avenue.
So it would be 112 feet from Hartford Avenue.
112.
Well, that's, yeah.
Yeah. Because I know we've run into a lot of corner lot issues in the past and both, wherever there's a street is considered a front yard line.
Yeah. Yeah. So right now, if you're standing on Hartford Avenue, looking south from the front property line to the rear property line, or technically a side property line, is only 23 feet deep. So you don't even have 50 feet to start the measurement for the lot depth. But again, taking into account the lot line revision, it's pushing that lot line further out as shown in the graphics. So again, less non-conforming, but still doesn't conform to the regulation.
Totally running to. Still non-compliant, but not as much. Yep. People's 50 feet, that way through their house.
Right.
Okay. Any more questions before I open that, this item up for discussion?
Some.
Anything else to say? We'll sit you down temporarily. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the second request for variance?
For 254.
Yes, for 254 Salmon Brook Street. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against it?
No, it's actually for 256.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Would you please step to the podium to talk about the third variance?
John Pegg, Mayor of 19th Street South, West Granby. So the third variance is needed for the front yard for 256 Salmon Brook Street. This is a corner lot we just talked about with frontage on Hartford Ave and along Salmon Brook Street. 25 foot front yard is required under the COCE zoning. Current building is non-conforming. I'm ma, I'm trying to make it less non-conforming. And let's see here. Two, so again, back to the addition, it's future addition, it's not current addition. We don't have plans to build it out. Our plan is only to improve the coffee shop for, for the current tenants. And so it's just a narrative regarding like the closest point from the front property line. Therefore, we're asking for a variance of 9.2 feet, which is, meets the requirement. Now, we talked about the, the State Department of Transportation has that corner piece along Hartford and Salmon Brook Street.
Any questions from the board? Yes?
I guess for Abby, what, what year did the State Department of Transportation take this property for the intersection improvement?
Five years ago. I don't know. Five years ago.
So my question to the applicant is, when you bought this property, this was already taken and it made the, it made this non-conforming, correct?
Well, it was built before zoning, so it's all.
Well, this is, this to me is implying, this request is attributed to this depart, State Department of Transportation taking something that when this property was sold to this applicant had already been complete, completed years ago. So when this property was sold at a much possibly reduced price, because there was a lot of changes that were made to this property through various things, such as the improvements made to the center of Granby. I just want to make sure we document that.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the DOT took that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Does anyone, one in the audience wish to speak in favor of this request? Does anyone wish to speak against this request? We know who you are, but please.
I just have, I just have one question.
Stay. Would you put your name and address?
My name is Martha Miller. I live at 238 Salmon Brook Street. And my question is, John, will you be putting in coffee shop signs right on Salmon Brook Street for the coffee shop? I, I take it you're going to be advertising the coffee shop?
So again, I, I will be, I will follow the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
John Pegg.
This is, this is being recorded, so you'll be inaudible unless you're here.
So, so we will put signage up in following the regulations that are laid out, I believe, under the town guidelines. And we're currently not at that point yet anyway. I still have to come in front of the board under special permit for everything I want to do there.
All right. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. And my other question is, will there be signs for when your, your wife moves in for her speech therapy, will there also be signs for, for her office?
I, I would think there would be a sign for her office, but again, whatever falls within the regulations is, is what exactly I would follow. Our plan is not to post big signs on the buildings or make anything loud and obnoxious. If there's maybe one single sign that incorporates both businesses, then again, I will follow the, the regulations of what's already laid out regarding signage in Granby.
Any further questions? Thank you. I think we may be sitting down for the last time. We'll see. All right. So the discussion and hearing from the public is finished. No more questions on the part of the board? All right. We'll now close the public hearing section of this meeting. After that, we'll deliberate. You're welcome to sit and stay and see how our vote goes, but you won't be able to address the board during this part of the meeting. Okay? It's my inclination to vote on these three separately. Is that okay with everybody? All right. As similar as they are, they're, they're really separate things. So the first one, asking for a variance of 39.99 feet for 245 Salmon Brook Street. Let's talk. 245. What did I say?
You said 245. I'm like, wait, did we, see?
Always check my numbers. I am dyslexic. If there are three numbers, they will not be in the correct order when I say them. Thank you. Go ahead. I don't know. I feel that it's planning and zoning kind of chunked off this piece to be totally separate from the house already. And because they probably.
The print shop you're talking about.
The print shop, correct. I don't know if they had in mind that they wanted to bring, you know, a certain kind of business. I don't know. But they're two separate entities and they talk about the historical, but they seem to be talking about the house. I mean, this building has been sitting there, God, I've lived in Granby like 42 years and might have been a print shop when we moved here, but ever since then.
Daily print shop. I think it was back around.
Olivieri Print Shop.
Oh, well, he was, well, that was farther down.
Yeah.
But he started, yeah.
Oh, I thought they owned that too. Okay. And I mean, the fact that, like I said, they broke it off and they put it in a business zone says to me, I don't know if they're trying to give more options for it. Well, the issue is, is there a hardship that would prompt us to grant?
I guess the hardship is just everything near is non-conforming.
Right. It's non-conforming.
For, for the print shop.
Less conforming.
But.
Due to the roadwork.
And currently, I would assume the house would be conforming? I'm not exactly sure. I didn't ask that question.
No, because I thought the house.
Oh, because it's, it currently is not conforming to zoning, but it's pre-zoning.
Right. Right. But I thought we were just specifically talking about.
The house right now.
And I mean, right now, anything would be shut down, it sounds like. I mean, the print shop is non-conforming, period. Saying, short of, I don't know what. So the hardship would be, it's a useless piece of property.
The non-conformity of, as it's six now, it.
Right. Already.
Nothing can be done. It's already not conforming. I mean, if efforts were being made to make it less non-conforming, that seems to be the right direction.
Further discussion?
I, I'm not sure I agree. I actually wanted to try a motion to deny the variance one, because this is really focused on the house and it's just cutting a bigger chunk that is going to eventually probably end up in some type of a new zone, despite what we heard tonight.
The fact that it's already in the center edge zone?
Right.
The whole property.
Right. Now by drawing the line around the old existing garage and taking away basically the back hot backyard of the residential property, I think it's just, it's heading in the wrong direction prematurely and I just don't see a hardship that is new to fix this at this time.
And money can't be a mitigating factor.
So did you say you wanted to make a motion?
I want to make a motion to.
Let me ask you to do this, please, though. Motions are generally not stated with negatives. So as counterintuitive as it seems, if you make a motion to approve, it doesn't mean you intend to vote yes. It just gives us something, it's, it's less open to interpretation if it's stated as a positive. And then if you don't want what you just made as a motion, you vote no.
Right.
Okay? Not sensible, but pretty clear. And yes, that is Robert's rules.
That is Robert's rules.
Yes. Your face.
I feel like we're backdooring it into.
Well, I, I, doing what makes you comfortable and what makes me comfortable is well. All right. So are you ready to make a motion?
No.
Oh, is there further discussion? Because if there's not, somebody better make a motion.
Yeah, I don't know where I sit. That's my problem. It's, I can see both sides of the story.
Make a motion and see how it falls then, unless you have more to say. Thinking out loud is fine.
Well, we have to make a motion anyway, so I'll make a motion to approve the rear lot change at 254 Salmon Brook Street to create a variance of 39.99 feet to the rear lot.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now we can discuss the motion. Is this when you give us your thoughts?
Well, I am concerned about encroachment of commercial zones into residential. I used to live next door to this property for many years and when they tried doing stuff over it, they took the refugee house away and they made it a bank. And there are certain things that I fought for, which, you know, one was that they put a fence up to put us, because at the time, they always tried to have a barrier between commercial and residential. And this seems like it's kind of falls into that. And this seems like it's kind of falls into that same realm, where you know, you have a commercial, which is already done and there's nothing we can do about this, but by splitting off the lot, that doesn't say, that doesn't prevent somebody from trying, maybe not John, but maybe whoever buys it after John or whatever, that they want to make that commercial and they might have a better chance of doing that, so.
It's a lot to chew on.
It is. So, that's just a point. So I don't know if anybody else has feelings about that.
I agree.
Further discussion? It looks that like then we're ready for a vote. Would you please read the motion again? Could you have... Okay.
I don't know. We haven't, well...
Well, there was a motion to approve the rear lot variance for 254 Salmon Brook Street, which that one in itself isn't going to change anything, because it's not changing the back lot. So we can, that way, it puts on paper that that back lot is pre-existing non-conformity. That back line. And that's not cutting it out.
Right. So we're just right now voting strictly on 256?
254.
2?
254.
Right, 254. I can't get my numbers straight.
Claire, so the first variance the board is considering is a lot depth variance for 254 Salmon Brook Street. Okay, so not rear yard?
No, it's whatever the back line is, that 100, whatever that 150...
Between 254 and 256.
So the 150-foot lot depth?
Yes.
Is what we're voting on.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's not a rear yard setback. Okay.
No, it's not a setback. It's just a grill.
Yeah.
Would you like to read one of your...
Yeah, okay. We'll make a motion to approve the 150-foot lot depth in the CE zone of 254 Salmon Brook.
You want to grant a variance?
The hardship would be that it's a pre-existing lot and it was before zoning. So this will just make it legitimate, I guess.
So you've moved to grant a variance of 39.99 feet on 254 Salmon Brook Street?
Yeah, for a lot depth variance.
Concerning the 150-foot lot depth in the CE zone?
Correct.
I think that's all the factors we need to mention, right? Who made the second? Which is the house?
Andy did second.
Okay, do you accept the change?
Yes.
Okay. Now are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Those abstaining? The motion carries. Let's talk about the second variance now. This is the 1 to 254. Zoning regulations require a 150-foot depth in the COZ-E zone. And the proposed lot depth is 37.76 feet. Therefore, a variance of 112.24 feet is needed. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Bob's our motion guy.
There doesn't have to be a motion.
I wonder if, I guess it's parliamentary, you know, if we give it to 254, does that extend it to the whole property line before the split? Or do we have to, now, if we make the split, do we have to delineate that again?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Well, then probably what we should do is include the proposed lot line revision as presented. Next lineup? To be specific?
See, I'm starting from three up. You guys confused me when you went one to three.
Well, we're going to two, but we're doing two.
Yeah, we're doing two.
Actually, is that an Abby question?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm lost.
So if we approve the foot debt variance to 254, does that include the whole property before the split?
By the split, you mean that dog leg there?
Yeah, by the, by the change in property line.
Yeah, so approving that, because the lot depth is measured from the midpoint of the lot frontage to the rear. So it's shown exactly where that midpoint is to the rear. So that's specifically what you're approving on this plan.
This is, that's this line. I get you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, where, yeah, she won the 110.01 foot proposed.
Oh, there it goes, too.
Okay. That was where I was confused. I didn't understand that earlier. That's why I was asking you, is it an average?
God, yeah, so it's, yeah, specific from the midpoint.
And then... So then we're doing the split. It's kind of hard to figure out that. Is that this one here? That's probably this one here, the 62.67 inch.
Yeah.
So...
So it's confusing?
It is. It's extremely confusing.
Yeah, so, um, it's noted as 62.76 feet on the plan set, but I clarify it in the memo, the proposed lot depth is actually 37.76 feet, because they're measuring 25... The 62.76 feet is measured at the starting point 25 feet back and it really should be 50 feet back.
Right, right.
So it's that difference of 25.
So this goes to 37.
So it's the, the line is in the correct spot for the midpoint, but it's showing the incorrect distance, as noted in the memo.
Thank you for the parliamentary definition.
So wait, there is...
That's this one. So here's, this is Hartford Ave and the print shop. This line right here?
This line.
It says 62.76.
Yeah.
That's, should be 30. It's not encompassing the 50-foot setback.
Not encompassing that.
Or the 25-foot setback. So it becomes 37.76. And that, they were talking the lot depth in relation to Hartford Ave.
Right. It's this way. It's this way.
And I guess that's the one that...
It's trickier.
Is the trickier one, because it's now, in a sense, it's, it's, you have the, the, the commercial zone is still the same, but they can encroach into the residential 30 feet if it's a split zone property. Because that, you know, that's what it's going to turn into. And... That's the one I have an issue with. Because it's putting it pretty close to the house and all that.
Yeah, so that's...
Well, I guess we have to put a motion, so I'll put a motion in to accept the variance as stated in Part II for a variance of 112.24 feet to the lot depth in relationship to Hartford Ave.
And the hardship?
Again, the hardship is, all the stuff is pre-zoning and the lines aren't, aren't... The hardship, that's the, that's the problem I have with this is the hardship, because this is... He doesn't need that to do the 30-foot expansion, because he can already do that because he owns both of those properties.
Right.
I don't know, we're not, we're not... The hardship is, it's monetary, I think. It's the way I see it.
But there can't be a hardship.
I know.
Right.
There was no real specific hardship.
No. Other thoughts?
But if we, we already approved the first one...
That's just making the whole lot conform, you know, give them a conformity, so to speak, to that back line, I guess, which I didn't understand at the moment, so.
Is there a second for the motion? If there's no second, the motion will die.
Well, a second will help us get to a vote.
If you second it, it will go to a vote.
If you don't second it, it will not vote.
If you don't second, the motion dies.
I'll, I guess I'll second to get to the vote.
Okay.
Because if you don't, if nobody else does, then it dies.
Right.
Right.
It goes away.
It's your motion.
Yeah, you don't have to accept.
But nobody votes.
Right.
And there is no vote.
Thanks.
So is there a second?
To be gracious, I'll say I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
If it's money, we can't even vote.
We can't, yeah.
So there's...
I don't see a hardship, to be honest with you, other than...
No.
A financial gain.
Then let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? The motion fails. Request number three, the third variance, front yard for 256 Salmon Brook Street.
I say that that variance should be taken up when they want to put the addition on, because they specifically add to, it's current non-conforming to construct the building addition in the future. It would be needed to set back 25 feet. I think at that time is when they should apply for the variance instead of now.
I'll second.
A little bit of a chore, but that's okay.
But by not granting the new line, what would he be then coming for?
Well, he could get a variance to build 30 feet.
I think we need to speak up just a little.
I think, I don't, I don't really know, to be honest with you, but... You know, it's specific, it specifically states in the request, the building is non-conforming and to construct the building addition in the future, it would need to be set back 25 feet from the property.
Well, no, I'm just saying if, by denying the second, haven't we kind of...
I think so.
Rolled out the third?
I think so.
Like, it's not even an option at this point?
Right.
Is that an Abby question?
Yes, so if you deny the lot depth variance, you can't revise the lot line. So there's no need for the front yard unless you're going to grant a variance for the small hashed area between the property line to be removed and the existing building, because the entire building is non-conforming, as it's all set within the required front yard.
That doesn't mean he can't modify the building if it were to stay the way it is today.
You can't change the footprint, right?
Yeah, you can't change the footprint. Right, so, and he openly suggested that he wasn't considering anything in the near future. So if they wanted to build something bigger, then that would be the time to ask for a variance to, some kind of a crazy variance to allow that to happen.
So be back before you for the lot depth and front yard?
Yeah.
It sounds like we don't have a motion then.
I got nothing.
All right, we'll leave it at that. We can't make a motion on the third request because we voted down the second request. Okay. That's the business for today, folks. Yeah, please have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Don't you dare. Abstentions? Thank you, everybody.